Start this August fifteenth meeting of the Atherton City Council. As always, let's stand for the butch the flag.
One nation under God, in the wisdom of the Lord.
Thank you very much. Uh, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Councilmember Dobby?
Here.
Councilmember McKeehan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Woodburn?
Here. Okay, so first up, we have a proclamation for Richard Moore. We want you on this side of the tree. Is it taller? Okay. So, um, many of you know that Chief Moore has been here for quite a long time. We've selected a few things from his background, although it's pales in comparison to really all of his achievements and all he's given, but we'll try and summarize. So whereas Mr. Moore lived in Atherton for over thirty years on Burns Avenue, and he is a loving father of two, grandfather of four, and husband of fifty years to Patricia Moore, and whereas Richard Moore has dedicated his life to serving the community, and specifically this community. Having served as an Atherton Police Reserve Officer from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-seven, continuing on as an Atherton Police Officer, and moving through the ranks to become the Atherton Police Chief, and then Police Chief slash City Manager, returning, retiring after twenty-eight years of service. And whereas Richard Moore earned an Associate of Arts Degree in Criminal Justice, a Bachelor's Degree in Sociology, and a Graduate Degree in Public Administration, and whereas Richard Moore has volunteered his time and his knowledge to the Atherton Civic Interest League as its President, to Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation as a Treasurer, the Atherton Library Study Committee, the Atherton Little League, serving as a Team Manager, and countless other activities and volunteer activities, and whereas Richard Moore was a San Mateo Police Officer and was the San Mateo Police Officer of the Year in nineteen seventy-eight. He was the President of the San Mateo County Chiefs of Police Association. He's a graduate of the FBI Academy Class Number One Ten, a Ford Police Foundation Scholar, and the President of the State of California Police Chiefs and Sheriff's Association, and where he also was the Treasurer of, I worked with him personally, as the Treasurer for the Parcel Tax Renewal that we just recently approved a while ago. Therefore, I would like to, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of Atherton, and on behalf of the whole community, commend you, Mr. Richard Moore, and express our sincere appreciation for your service to the community. Thank you very much. Say a few words, and all the council members would like to say something, and then anyone else who wants to come up and say something, you know, we're not going to hold you to your three minutes.
Well, I can remember the day, it was in nineteen sixty that my parents and I moved to Atherton, and started with the Police Department a few years after that, and it's been a joy to serve you through the ranks of the Police Department. And finally, after I retired, I got to volunteer and help the city at that time. But I'll miss Atherton with removing, and we're going with our, my daughter and her family and their four grandchildren, and we're moving to Granite Bay, up in Roseville area, and we'll be assisting my daughter, raising the four kids, they're ranging from four to nine, and we're really enjoying being a grandfather. So, thank you again. Atherton is always in my heart, and I'll never forget you. Thank you.
Just a, as a bonus here, Mr. Mayor, and you better quit, maybe five minutes on there. It'll probably take me about an hour and a half to do this.
Okay, well, just take your time.
I'm only kidding.[307.41][307.41](laughing) Richard's presence is great, and it's really well deserved. He's really been one of the, I think, twenty-fourth people in Atherton to shape Atherton the way it is today. We had a little group about fifteen years ago, and when Stan Bernhardt was alive, some of the guys here are still on it, Jerry and Jim, and, let's see, Gerv and John Ruggiero. And we, Stan Bernhardt was the first Chairman of the Tennis Committee, so he had to put up with a lot, but he did, he did a lot. He used to have great parties in his backyard, tremendous parties, and one of the things he would do when we got back there, there were about twenty, fifteen or twenty of us, I'd say total, they're all listed here, the guys, so nobody can escape without them, you know, so, but, um, when we would go to Stan's house for this festive dinner, he would take us for a tour through his wine cellar, and this was some kind of a wine cellar. I don't know, Jim, did you ever, I think you got through there, I think Jerry did. So we decided that we better name ourselves. We had fifteen or twenty members, and everybody was mixed up in town activities in one way or the other, and we ought to give ourselves a name. The first name that came up was, let's call ourselves Stan's Raiders, speaking of the wine cellar, let's get down in. And then cooler heads prevailed, and we decided on the Guardians of Stan's Wine Cellar. And that was to be sure that he, not even Stan, but that nobody got in there and had more of the wine than they deserved. So we named ourselves the Guardians of Stan's Wine Cellar. We were gonna, we were working on a female group to join us. We were going to call them the Guardianettes, but we didn't quite get there, so before Stan died. But he was a great guy, he made a lot of difference to Atherton, and Richard Moore had one of his many, many golden moments. He was the editor of our newspaper. This, this is pretty heavy, I can still lift it, but it's got lots of pictures in it of the group, and it was indeed a fabulous group. And with Richard leading the way, we, Sandy, I missed, yeah, you were on it. No, you're one of the originals. Yeah, you can't escape. So, anyway, that's about it. I'm gonna leave this with Richard, and it'll take, you know, maybe five minutes to get through. No, take it home with you, and bring it back, and I'll let Sandy have it. And, great job, partner. I love ya. I love you, Dave.
Any other tributes from the public for Richard Moore?
I'll make this a little bit more succinct, but thank you, Bill. I just want to share my first time I met Richard. I was a middle- or high schooler. I can't remember what year it was. It was after nineteen sixty-six and before nineteen seventy, but...
Sixty-seven.
I remember standing at the front of the high school, there was this young cop, and I was just amazed how young this guy was. Turned out that was Richard, and he had hair, too, back then. We've been friends ever since. Thank you.
Okay, any other public? Then we'll go and have a council comment. Jerry?
I just wanted to add my best wishes to you, Richard. It's been just great knowing you and working with you, and not only on specific organizations, but also the Easter egg hunt. Many an Easter eggs will put out there. The beautification of the park, you played a key role there. One of the things that Richard brought to the town is not just the spirit of being able to do things, but the spirit in which he conducted the doing. Always very positive, very upbeat, very much one of bringing the community together, helping to unify the community, and Richard, we really appreciate that. I think at one point in time, you actually wore two hats as Police Chief, didn't you? For the Town of Brisbane, was it?
Yes. For a year. I did it for a year.
So he may have, early on, set a precedent here that, who knows, might resurface at some point in time. So, Richard, best wishes to you.
Thank you.
You're great.
Well, I worked with Richard also on the Easter egg hunt, which he, you know, funnily enough, those things just don't happen by themselves. They take a lot of organizing, and Richard was just an expert organizer. But I also worked with him in the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation, where he was, at least while I was there, he was the Treasurer, I think he probably wore several hats and that. He was the Treasurer, and you know, you could always count on the fact that not only was it accurate what he presented as far as the money goes, but he was also looking for other ways to raise some money. So I think he did a great job there. And one of the things he did was, for me, was, we had had several Police Chiefs here, and I won't comment on them particularly, but we were looking for a new Police Chief at that time, and I asked Richard for the things that we should look for in a Police Chief, and he really gave me some really good suggestions, which I hope I brought to the council. So, Richard, I would echo what Councilmember Carlson says. First of all, I hope your health is okay, and we wish you all the best, and hopefully, once in a while, you'll come back to see us.
So, Richard, I don't have the longevity of knowing you as some of the friends here tonight, but I have enjoyed knowing you. I know that in two thousand eight, two thousand seven, you moved back into town, and you were thinking about, you know, council, and you got me involved with the Easter egg hunts. You were so enthusiastic, and we were out there early in the morning throwing out eggs, and it was a lot of fun. So thank you very much. I'll miss you. Love driving by your house and knowing that you were there with your grandchildren, and you're a great-grandfather, you are a super-grandfather, you are not a great-grandfather, but those children were very, very lucky to have you. So God bless, and we will miss you.
Richard, you epitomize what is best of someone who loves this town. I think about the time when you came before us and you said, we have to do something about Watkins Avenue and the safety, and you said, we have to paint that aside walkway white, and Duncan said, no, we can't paint it, because who's going to be out there painting it, and it might not be safe, and you said, I'll do it. And there you were, painting that asphalt white, and it wasn't good enough, you were, I think you gave him even a second coat, but you did a superb job on it, and said that you would maintain it, and I bet you'll come back and maintain it if it needs to be maintained. And then we had a problem with our battery-powered speed detectors, and on the Transportation Committee, which Jim Dobby and I have been on for probably too many years, but I don't have to worry about that anymore, you may know, the solar power doesn't work on any of them. So you said you'd hardwire them, because you had just received your electrician's license. And so, to this day, it is the only one throughout Atherton that works. And as I go up and down Watkins, I tell my husband, slow down, we're about to pass that thing, and we don't want to be going over the speed limit. And oddly enough, now, whenever I'm driving anywhere in town, I drive within the speed limit. You'll be happy to know, because of you, and the fact that you remind me that the speed limits are twenty-five miles an hour, and that reflector reminds me that you can't go over twenty-five, and it is the only one that works. And you've also told me that a while back, it wasn't working, and you told them that it wasn't, and they reminded you that they were going to go out and fix it. So you do keep us on our toes, and you do keep current with the things that you have promised to maintain and get out there. The other thing that makes me think of you, besides all the things that you've done through the town, like the maintenance of the park and getting us all out there with shovels and tugging on bushes and planting new trees and taking out stumps, and my husband and I fixing that horrible bunch of bushes at the gate that one time, is, and the Easter egg hunt where I fell in the hole this last time, is the wonderful Christmas display at the top of your house every year. And it's sad to think it's not going to be here this coming year, and I know there's nothing you can do about that one. So I guess this year, I'm just going to have to drive by and remember it as it was, because I know for sure you're not going to be able to come back and put it up on whoever has bought that home. So I thank you for all the memories, I thank you for all the improvements, I thank you for your spirit, I thank you for your initiative, I thank you for bringing only good things to this town, which I think is probably a record, and something that we can all try to aspire to, but I doubt that any of us will ever be able to meet, and I wish you the absolute best, because whoever's going to receive you into their community is awfully lucky. I shall miss you.
Thank you.
Finally, Richard, you know, we've known each other for a number of years. I really appreciated all the counsel you've given me in the past, I appreciate on the campaign activities that you've worked on together for the Parcel Tax, your regular emails with the updates, your very meticulous accounting, and your encouragement that you were going to find a way to make sure that we collected enough money. And you always were on top of things, and I know that even during my campaign, you gave me nice counsel and were very supportive, even though you were working on competitors' campaigns, so I appreciate that. You do epitomize what's good about Atherton, always putting the town activities first and foremost, always lending it a hand, and that's what makes Atherton great, and that's why you have such a great record here, and you're so beloved, because, you know, this is what we really wanted to do and see through, and Atherton really was. People say it's your home, you know, but it really was your home, and you made it a great home. So, thank you very much for your service to the town, and we'll miss you, but please make sure that we have your contact data, we'd like to keep you informed, and if we come back in town, we'd love to see you again. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I decided to work further comment. I'd like to thank you also for beautifying the corner of Watkins and Middlefield. You did a super job there, and when I congratulated you on that, you said, now it's time for the town to beautify the other corner. So I just hope you all got that message.
Okay. We don't want to lose that. Mike, you took a note, right? All right. Okay, so now we have public comments, number four. And we're going, then after that, we're going to have the mosquito infectious control. So, public comments. Public comments are for items that are not on the agenda. There's a three-minute limit, and if you want to talk about anything that's on the agenda, you're welcome to talk about that at that time. So, thank you. State your name, please, and address.
Hi, my name is Kathy Schrank. I live at eighty-one Victoria Drive, here in Atherton, and I'm also an employee of the Holbrook Palmer City School District. I was hired earlier this summer as the Traffic Safety Coordinator. The district got some Safe Routes to School funding, which is very exciting, and they were able to hire me, and we're going to do some more bike rodeos and events like that. My main charge is to get more kids biking, walking, carpooling, and taking the bus to school, so to get more kids, more cars off the roads around our schools in the morning and after the pickup times. And we're eager to work with the Town of Atherton, this is a project for all four schools in the district, and of course, as you know, two of those are in Atherton. So I'm just gonna pass out some copies of my business card. If you have any ideas or questions or things that you can think of that we can work together on to get cars off the road around our schools, just contact me anytime.
So there's an Atherton Bike Coalition that I'd like to connect you with, if you haven't already been connected with.
I am.
Okay, good.
Very familiar with them. Super. Super, super.
And we will be working with Facebook on looking at new bike lanes.
Great.
With some of their money as well.
Great. Yes, it's your cards. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service to the school.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? John?
I'm John Buckeye, thirty-four, Selby, and I just want to say, Dick, I'm sorry to see you go. I was very touched when I learned what you're doing with your grandchildren, and I was also very touched when you came over to me during the police outreach meeting, particularly under the circumstances, I think you're a remarkable guy in many respects. But I wanted to say a few words tonight about Kathy and Keith and life, her decision to retire this year, and some people ask me, why don't we wait until December? Well, I may not be around here then either, so I thought I'd do it now. So Kathy, I think you've shown remarkable dedication to the community in over twelve years of service. I think you've shown very significant courage and sometimes outright heroism in challenging many of the things you felt could be improved, and I think most unfortunately, you've shown tremendous fortitude in having to undergo constant and vicious criticism for doing what you felt was right. And I think Kathy shares these traits with anyone who has ever made a difference. And as we all know, making a difference is really a very harsh dividing line between ideas getting criticized and attacking the people who have those ideas. And I think we also all know that making a difference has different labels applied by different people with different points of view. Some of them are called rocking the boat, meddling, upsetting the status quo, and many other terms I can't think of right now. There are certainly, and especially recently, been very ugly sentiments expressed on various blogs, but I also know that there's someone alive and well in Atherton today, literally because Kathy was willing to rock the boat, and the elderly woman whose life she saved and her family are quite grateful for this, even though Kathy has never spoken publicly about this or otherwise saw any credit for it. Let's look at what rocking the boat really means. Because Kathy was willing to rock the boat, people in Atherton no longer need to wonder whether building department or inspectors need extra motivation in order to approve questionable plans. That is a stark statement, but we all know it is true. Because of Kathy rocking the boat, we now have a city attorney who thinks it's common sense to resolve issues rather than running up the largest possible legal bill he can. Because of Kathy rocking the boat, we now have a police department led by an objective outside individual who is insisting on competency, professionalism, and accountability to all the taxpayers of this community rather than a select few. It has widely been acknowledged that there has been an enormous improvement in the police department and city attorney functions. I've heard some of the council members opine on that on the YouTube videos, and I really kind of understand that the people who recognize this, that acknowledge these improvements, can criticize anyone who advocated, as Kathy did, for these improvements being absolutely essential. So Kathy, thank you for being willing to rock the boat. I think perhaps that should be more accurately stated as thank you for being really the only person willing to rock the boat. As a politician, it's certainly much easier not to. Thank you for being willing to disregard your personal popularity when striving to make a difference. Thank you for enduring hateful, spiteful attacks because of your willingness to ruffle feathers when doing the right thing. And while I'm sure that the number of people who support you and what you have done could be far louder a number than the chorus of anonymous attacks on logs, probably most are simply afraid to speak out as I am now doing for fear of being attacked. I imagine I might get attacked for it also, but it's simply the right thing to do, as I have learned from you. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public comments. Our report out of the closed session, we had a closed session this morning, or the seat meeting at six o'clock. There were two items, conference with the Labor Negotiator, and it was an advisory briefing to the council, no action was taken. Second one was conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. The council gave direction to the city attorney on how to proceed. No further discussion. Next, the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. You have my written report, don't take any questions.
So, on page two, you say that we are not able to receive the forty-nine thousand dollars in that credit, and because our roadway does not meet their criteria of fifteen years. So what is our criteria? And we could ask Mike that.
Yes, the reason, the way that the Town of Atherton actually is very good in doing the regular, you know, surface sealings, and those surface sealings generally have a design life, and they tend to have a design life of ten years, and that's why we weren't able to use the state funds. We took a look at different alternatives, but we, you know, from a cost-benefit standpoint, in order for us to do a more, more, you know, maintenance, it really wasn't necessary, and so we just did those.
It just seems like that's really high criteria, fifteen years then, because it seems like our roads are, we keep our roads in really good condition.
Yes, yes. And typically, the type of treatment that we put that meets the fifteen years is if they, is by putting in what's called an overlay, which is typically a two-inch to the asphalt. But because the Atherton roads are maintained more constantly, you know, frequently, you're able to do it in a more cost-effective manner, instead of spending a lot of money for these over, you do instead these surface sewer treatments, which is much more cost-effective.
And then I have one other question, and I think, Mike, it's in your report, the year-to-date versus budgeted, on page five, it, what is the timeframe on that? Is that, is that a calendar year? It's nine and a half months?
Yes, and what this is, is that we wanted to provide a summary of the contract maintenance services, and it was nine and a half months, because we didn't start with the contract maintenance services until mid-September. And so this was just a summary for the last fiscal year, in which it will be seen moving forward every month, is a year-to-date for this fiscal year, so that council...
Okay, so that was as of June thirtieth?
That's correct.
Okay. It just, it didn't indicate that, so...
Yeah, but what you're showing at the bottom, that's one month versus the budget, and so if you, if you calendarize those, we're actually going to be ahead of or right on budget.
That's correct. So every month, the council will see how we are.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Okay? Okay?
Okay. Next up is the Community Organization Roundtable Report. We have a report from the mosquito, San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
Just wanted to make one correction on the agenda. Samuel Lerner is actually the president of the board.
Oh, sorry.
Bob Gay is the general manager.
Okay, sorry. So Mr. Lerner?
Yeah. Okay. I am Samuel Lerner, and I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District. The trustees of the district are, one trustee is appointed from each city in San Mateo County. We have 20 incorporated cities, and one trustee is appointed by the county at large. So four years ago, I was appointed by the Atherton City Council to represent Atherton. And then I served for two years as a trustee. I served, I was elected by the Board of Trustees to be vice president, and for the next two years, I've been elected to be president of the board. And this, this district has been around since 1916 here in San Mateo County. It was one of the first in the United States. And the reason I got interested, I had never, other than serving in the United States Army and working for a little stint for the post office, I had never held any other government position. And I got interested because my wife and I are both veterinarians, and she saw a little ad in the newspaper and said, you might be interested in this, because my graduate degree was in biological sciences before I became a veterinarian. And also veterinarians do deal with diseases that are carried between animals and people. So, and this is what really, the mosquito abatement district is there, the mission really is, to safeguard all the residents of San Mateo County against not only the discomfort of mosquitoes and other creatures, but also to prevent diseases that they carry. So we're here for your, your health and your comfort. And that's the mission, basically, of the district. It's a lot more complicated than that, I've learned. So by the way, I've been a 25-year resident of Atherton. And what I'd like to do now is introduce our manager. And I work very closely with the manager. And our manager, Robert Gay, had a career in the United States Navy. He retired as a lieutenant commander, and he was a medical entomologist in the United States Navy. And basically, what they do is prevent diseases that are transmitted from mosquitoes and other vectors to our troops all over the world. So he had a wonderful background. He came to the district 15 years ago. He's been the manager for 13 years. And you don't hear much about us. And the reason you don't is the, what I see is the wonderful job that the district has been doing in preventing things. That's the whole idea. And we come to you tonight, I told, I've told members of the city council that I don't come around very often. I do give them an entomology report every month, and I don't come around very often. I said, I will when there's a problem. Well, we have a problem in Atherton. And Robert Gay will now discuss it. Thank you.
Are we doing charts?
Thank you for taking the time to hear from us. This is a pretty exciting time right now with West Nile virus, as many of you well know. You're seeing it in the news almost every night. We have fogging going on around the state right now. We have aircraft fogging areas of Elk Grove, south of Sacramento. We have a major West Nile virus situation going on out in Oakley and Brentwood and that area. There's fogging going on almost every week out there. We've been pretty fortunate in San Mateo County, because most of your mosquitoes that breed here during the summer are in your storm drains. They're in underneath your city. It's where the water's located. And we have a pretty, well, we have probably one of only two programs in the state where we aggressively treat those areas of your storm drains. And you see that with our little white Jeeps that you see driving around the cities. That's what they're doing. Each one of those Jeeps is treating up to 500 catch basins a day. So we're doing close to 80,000 catch basins every month. And that's what's preventing most of your mosquito problems in your cities, especially Atherton also. Right now, we've had two positively chronic West Nile virus birds in your city, which has us very concerned. We're not sure exactly where they actually contracted the disease, because they're chronic infections, which means they're at a low level. The birds may not have died actually from the West Nile virus. But the one we just had recently, just a little over a week ago, was a crow, which is very unusual. We're in discussions with the state right now on this. Crows typically are very sensitive to West Nile virus, and they die very quickly from the disease. So for one to be chronically positive really is a little bit of a misnomer in our mind. We are aggressively trapping mosquitoes in your city right now. You'll see our CO2 traps up. The technicians probably will be knocking on your doors, asking if they can put CO2 traps up in your backyard. And we're taking all of those mosquitoes that we capture and we send them to UC Davis for testing for West Nile virus. Right now, the last group we sent in was negative, which is good. If we do have positive mosquitoes, we will be fogging your city. And any city that has positive mosquitoes in, we will be fogging. We will contact your police department, your city council, all of the agencies that are typically involved, we will be contacting, letting them know that we have to go move forward with fogging. We're hoping that we do not have to get to that point. Right now, we've just had positive birds and a positive swirl, and so we're hoping we can keep it at that. We're aggressively capturing those mosquitoes, and we'll keep sending them.